We got volume turned down.
Okay.
See what it says.
Doesn't sound like we're getting feedback now, right? I mean, I can hear me.
No feedback. Feedback is ended. Maybe you can't hear us.
Oh, we can hear you.
Okay, I was just talking and I wasn't getting any reaction, so that's not the first time that's happened, but uh.
Except the problem is. I'm here.
Just go ahead.
Yeah, I'm hearing them through yours. I think Cindy has my volume turned off.
I'm just gonna turn it off. I'll go through, I'll listen to you.
Yeah, but I don't think I have any volume.
Made this room so smoothly the other day.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Now I just have to get Tim to leave the room. It's causing problems for me. Okay. Let's uh, let's go ahead and call the Johnson City Council meeting number twenty dash eighteen to order. Cindy, roll call please. Cindy?
Councilmember Coe?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
To welcome everyone that is with us this evening. Cindy, do we have anyone other than staff and council members on with us?
We have Betty Devine with us. I'm inquiring now as to whether she will be addressing the council or.
Okay. Well, welcome Betty and welcome to anybody else who might be joining us yet this evening. There will be, we do have an agenda and if you're here to address the council on an agenda item, we would ask that you wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. Next item on the agenda is agenda approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, council members, any changes? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second, Coe.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving onto, onto public communications. Cindy, do we have anyone that would like to address the council under public communications?
Betty Devine indicated she was just here to listen, but we just had someone else join, so I am checking to see.
Okay.
Are going to. Apparently they are no longer. I, let's see. They don't show in this meeting, so I think you're good.
Okay. If there is no one to address the council under public communications, we'll move on to public hearings. And we have two public hearings this evening. The first is to conduct a public hearing on the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of not to exceed six million dollar sewer revenue capital loan notes to evidence the obligation of the city they're under. And consider resolution number twenty dash two twenty-two instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of not to exceed six million dollars in sewer revenue capital loan notes. And we will open this public hearing at seven oh nine. And Teresa, is that you?
That is. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um. The action you're taking tonight is a follow-up to action you took back in June when the city entered into a planning and design loan with the Iowa State Revolving Loan Fund, or we call them our SRF loans. And both infrastructure and environment has been retained as the consulting engineer to design the Northwest Area Sanitary Sewer Extension Segment A. And Segment A would be to provide sewer service to approximately six hundred and fifty-five air acres air in the area and would be entirely a gravity main sewer system. Future extensions to the main, including installation of several lift stations to provide service to the additional one thousand one hundred acres of growth in the area would be off of this gravity main. Much of the area today has pockets of rural residential users on private septic systems and the system would ensure municipal sanitary sewer system provided to the area to accommodate urban growth patterns and densities. If, uh, the thought at this point would be the same as we've done in other places where people are allowed to attach to our sewer when they would need the sewer. If a developer comes in, then he would of course have to be using the city sewer, but those that are already in existence out there. It's my understanding that's how we would, we would structure this. But this is based on, um, the Iowa Finance Authority's timetables and, and the things that we have to do to keep things moving. That's why we're having this hearing tonight. It is in our CIP. And, um, until we get the design back and are ready to bid or specs or any of like that, we won't be borrowing any of this money. All of that has to come back to the council. So you guys will see exactly what that's going to be or look like or cost or any of that. This is just getting all of the hearings and paperwork in order for us to do the financing when we're ready. Are there any questions?
Questions for Teresa?
Teresa, thank you for that explanation because I was a little concerned that we were voting to approve six million dollars and we didn't. Something in front of us that in any way just physically described what we were doing. So it's concerning to me that when you look at these things and there's really no graphic example.
The only thing we would have is in our CIP right now, which is just that sanitary sewer system map that you've seen several times where we talk about segment A, B, C, and D that hasn't changed over the past two or three years. So, um, that's why the engineers in there are doing their work now, but no, not until we get anywhere much further along would we actually be borrowing money. The money we have borrowed is the planning and design loan so that we can get that information put together, but not borrowing to do any construction.
It would, it would, I know that for city staff, they have the A, B, C, and D all memorized, but it's, that's not true for council. So it'd be helpful if that could be circulated again. I realize roughly where it is, but my, what I for one, maybe others have this all memorized in their heads, but it's helpful for me. I'm a visual person and I like to as much as, as often as we can circulate that. We could, we, to me, we need to overdo it, not underdo it. I think we.
And I don't know, Cindy, if you, Cindy, if you can, um, get into the library and this, and the CIP, it's in there.
I don't need it right now.
Oh, okay. All right.
Sometime after the meeting, because you've done a great job of pointing out that, that we're not, that this is, this is, we're not committing to this. So it just, but to me, I like something vis- visual and, and, and we, we, anyway, so end the speech. But if somebody would send that to me, that would be greater than everybody else, whatever wants it, so.
Absolutely.
Other questions for Teresa? This is a public hearing on this matter. Cindy, do we have anybody on that would like to address council?
No, we do not.
Okay. Given that, we will close the public hearing then at seven thirteen. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash two twenty-two?
Move approval, Coe.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Here.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item five B, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number twenty dash two thirty, accepting the acquisition of real estate interest and authorizing acquisition of such real property for Gateway redevelopment. And is this Adam?
This is me. Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Cindy, if you wouldn't mind pulling up.
Let me, let me open the public hearing. This is a public hearing and we will open it at seven fourteen.
Cindy, if you could pull up in the Urbandale-Johnston sale annexation map for me. This is a resolution to consider the acquisition of eleven point two seven acres. It's currently open space within the city of Urbandale. The acquisition price is proposed to be a hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. That purchase price is based off appraisal that we did for the Christianson property off of the gateway there, adjacent to the Ignite project and just on the floodplain property. So we're fairly confident it's very similar in nature and it's fairly recent, about two years old. So it does include a small inflationary adjustment for that. Reflects the thirty-one cents per square foot price off of this. The city of Urbandale will consider the purchase agreements tomorrow evening. And if approved by both parties, we anticipate closing by the end of the month. Then this property, as a reminder, is also currently leased by the city of Johnston from Urbandale. But after some discussions off of how we'd like to see the Ignite property develop and some of this property that they would like to be able to utilize and for financing purposes, they would like to own it as they'll have a bank note against it. Both parties agreed that it would make sense, particularly given that the city of Johnston currently uses this property for a trail and does a lot of the maintenance out here and owns or controls within the city of Johnston most property north of Beaver Creek in this area. That would make sense for the city of Johnston to purchase the property. And then presuming that is approved, we would then move forward with the annexation of the property from the city of Urbandale and then annexation into the city of Johnston. That will take several months, so we'll be simultaneously going through site approval processes with Urbandale in the interim, but by early next year, this property would be part of the city of Johnston is the intention. The purchase funds for this is part of existing funds received as part of the twenty eighteen taxable bond sale earmarked for property acquisitions in the central district have attached the resolution and the purchase agreements. If there are any questions from the mayor or the city council, I'm happy to answer them.
Council have any questions?
Hey, this is a quick question. This is the same property that Urbandale was leasing it out to us at no cost to us. That's the following.
That is correct.
Okay, and what change? I thought they said they're not going to sell it to us, not exchange. Now what change? What do you know and then?
I think as everybody sort of realized that the Ignite project was going to have a substantial impact and was moving forward, there's an understanding that this project area would make more sense as part of the city of Johnston and be able to sell it to Ignite or a portion of this. So the plan would be is we would sell about, I think it's about two acres of this eleven point two seven acres over to Ignite so that they can invest in their field, which would cover a small fraction of this. And because, you know, it just provides a little more stability, I think, for Ignite to have the property under their control as opposed to subleased from the city of Johnston to them. So I think that's why Urbandale eventually got on board is they just kind of saw that this project was, was moving forward and that it's going to be mutually beneficial and this would be the cleanest way for the, uh, the transaction to go forward.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I think that's a really good idea that we own the property and it becomes our state. I really do that. Thank you, Adam. Thanks for working on, on this.
Sure thing.
Other questions for Adam?
So Adam, we're going to sell two acres of the eleven acres. Is that right?
Uh, you know, I, we haven't had, it's probably more like three or four acres. That looks like from my staff notes here. They haven't delineated exactly what would become part of the Ignite field site there. So that's just kind of my guesstimate for the time being. But as we move forward with this transaction and the site plan for Ignite, we'll be able to determine that. And the intention is, is they would be buying that from us at the same purchase price as we acquired it from the city of Urbandale.
And then, but how much of the remainder, so that's, that's to say for, for, so eleven acres, they buy four, at least roughly seven. And how much of that seven will be part of the, the city park area or will that be just sort of area that's unused or?
Uh, currently the trail runs through this property. We have a pre-existing easement from before the city of Urbandale bought the property. So much of that remaining property that we will have will incorporate that trail, which will probably be slightly rerouted a little further away from Beaver Creek to avoid it getting any damage as the embankment's kind of eroded there. And then the very southern tip of it, that would probably be a portion of that cricket field. And then a little bit to the north directly west of the Polley Eyes property would also be part of the youth soccer field. So there's a variety of uses there right along the riverbanks. It's, it's going to be primarily, I think, prairie grass area. And then you go over to a trail that kind of runs southeasterly on the property. And then a portion of that cricket field and part of the youth soccer field, so variety of uses.
And the thirty-one cents an acre, you said that it's based on the Christianson property?
Just the westmost portion of the Christianson property, the portion that's in the floodplain or in the floodway, yes.
Okay, so it's really an apples to apples comparison?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? This is a public hearing. Cindy, do we have anybody on now with us this evening that would like to address council on this item?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We will close the public hearing then at seven twenty-one. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash two thirty?
I move.
Did you get that, Cindy?
Yes, I did.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yeah.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval. Evans?
Mayor, I just want to make a real quick comment on the consent agenda whenever it's appropriate.
Okay, well, we need a second on the motion and then we can have some discussion.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Tom or Councilman Coe?
I just wanted to, I think item six J lists, uh, applicants for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I just, I thought it was a very impressive list of applicants for that and I, which I thought frankly is really reflective of some really quality people we have in our community. So just noted, kind of looked through the, the responses we received and looks like the person we've appointed for it is, is very well qualified as were all the people who applied. So just felt, felt really good about looking through those, that list of people who are, who are A, very well qualified and B, interested in, in serving our city.
Yeah, I'm finding it more and more encouraging that we have so much interest from our residents to be involved on a voluntary basis in, in the things that we're doing. So yes, I, I agree with you. We had some outstanding candidates. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Here.
Motion passed. Moving on to item eight A, consider approval of ETC Institute to allow a community and business survey. And I'm guessing this is Janet.
It is. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you, you have a proposal for an business and community survey with ETC Institute on the meeting on Tuesday, September eighth, I came forward with a proposal about using Poco NRC, but after further discussion with them, they had informed us that the questions from ETC Institute are copyrighted, so we can't use the exact same questions. And also for the business survey, they don't allow us to really steer off too much from their regular questions, so we couldn't ask specific business-related questions geared towards our community. ETC Institute, we have used them the last three times we have done a community survey. They will allow us to add those broadband questions and any other related questions that we may want information about from our residents. The business survey, they also allow us to steer it right towards our community. None of their business surveys that they currently do are exactly the same. They're all different geared towards that community. And so we had had internal discussions regarding the business survey, so we will be able to ask specific, specific questions that we want to know how maybe things have affected with COVID because that will have to be covered. Those COVID-related questions will have to be added to each one in order to be covered through the CARES Act funds for this. So I am proposing that we move forward with ETC Institute because they allow us to have those questions that allow us to gear towards our community and we will be able to see exactly where we are with those benchmarks from the last community survey that we did in twenty eighteen to see if COVID has changed the responses, you know? So I think that will be great. Does anyone have any questions?
The only question that I would have is, Janet, if you're looking to put a committee together to help fine tune or update the survey, I'd be willing to help serve on that.
Okay.
And so anyway, just I, I've done that in the past and I think it's a very valuable. The surveys are both are very valuable and helpful, so would like to help with that process.
Okay, thank you. And council know that everyone would see the community and business survey before it finally went out to everyone. We would like to get responses back before, you know, have all the results by the end of December. That would be our hope. So hopefully at the end of October, we can get those surveys out and get the responses back, so. But I'll make sure to put a note down. Anyone have any other questions?
No, standing. Do we have a motion to approve? I guess the contract with ETC Institute to conduct the community and business survey.
I move. I second then.
However.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight B, consider approval of claims in the amount of one million, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval, Coe.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments. We had some city administrator comments before, but Jim, do we, do we have other administrator or staff comments?
Yes, I've got a couple more things to talk about. First of all, under the consent agenda, we did approve a contract with On Point Strategies to do our strategic plan. What we're going to do, staff will follow up tomorrow with several dates for city council members to respond to as far as scheduling the meetings. We actually have to schedule two dates for the, uh, for the, doing the strategic plan, so we will get those dates out tomorrow. And I just ask if, please be looking for that and respond as quickly as possible so we can get those dates set and begin our strategic planning process. We also will need to, we have a group, a couple of council members have volunteered to help identify how we're going to conduct future council meetings. And we, uh, part of the process is we were going to meet after the second council meeting of each month to discuss. For now, it'd be how we're going to conduct our meetings in October, so we need to get that group together and have that conversation. We'll certainly share that back out to the city council members. The, uh, police chief asked me to inform the council that on Friday night, September twenty-fifth, there's going to be a, uh, co-hosting of a Governor Traffic Safety Bureau multi-jurisdictional traffic safety project, which means it's a project where they focus on addressing traffic safety issues in a specific area on a specific date. And so it is scheduled for Friday night. And it will run from six PM to two AM. Social media and press releases have already been sent out to the public letting them know of the targeted traffic enforcement. The area of operation will be in and around Johnston, including interstates, the interstate from Merle Hay Road to Ryder Corner, one forty-one north to the Polk City exit and south to Merit, the Meredith area, excuse me. So, um, well, the focus will be on is speed, is addressing speed complaints including OWI deterrence and general enforcement of traffic rules or traffic laws. So I just wanted to make sure the council's aware of that. And again, the public has been informed that that is going to happen this Friday night. And, uh, I have asked Matt to give us an update on the projects. The Public Works projects that are currently under construction. So if Matt, if you could give us that information, appreciate it.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start out with our Northwest Sixty-Second Avenue and Merle Hay intersection project. Sixty-Second Avenue west of Merle Hay has been prepped. Paving, there'll be rock going down over the next couple of days. And then paving should begin here midweek around Wednesday or Thursday. Sternquist will pave, then, then turn around after they pave the west side, will pave the southbound lanes. We estimate that this should be completed towards the end of next week. Plan is to open, uh, one lane in each direction while they continue to construct sidewalk and trail off to the side of the road. Segment's currently behind schedule and approximately three to four weeks. It is occurring liquidated damages, which we are tracking. While the, uh, what, that, they'll move over, the contractors currently installing storm sewer that's being constructed east of Merle Hay Road on Northwest Sixty-Second. Contractor will, uh, well, that's works taking place, contractor will begin working north on Merle Hay Road on the east side to put the on-street parking in the additional lane up to Northwest Sixty-fourth Avenue. That's estimated to take approximately four to five weeks once they begin there. On the east side of Merle Hay, sanitary sewer has been currently being tested. Once all those tests have passed, they'll switch the property owners over from the old sanitary sewer to the new sanitary sewer. As I stated earlier, they have began installing storm sewer on that east side of Merle Hay headed to the east of the end of stage two A. That's estimated to take approximately about a month. Begin grading on Northwest Sixty-Second Avenue to the east. They'll get that rocked. And then they're looking to have that paved around the middle of November. Currently, the engineer, both and the city are working with contractor to keep the project on schedule and get it open for early December completion. Any questions on that project? Moving on to our East of Merle Hay Road improvements, phase four, Northwest Sixtieth Avenue has been opened for traffic east of Vandy's, east of Northwest Fifty-fourth. There will still be some minor construction of the bio swell intakes and some restoration work that'll continue in that area off to the shoulder. Northwest Sixty-first Street and also paved on Friday. They tied in to Northwest Fifty-fourth this morning. They'll be placing subdrain this week and then towards the end of the week, around Thursday, they will be constructing, beginning to construct the driveways on the north side. And the south side driveways will follow the following week with grading and restoration to follow driveway construction. That project is nearing completion, probably look to have it substantially complete here by first week of October to mid-October. Any questions on that one? Moving on to Northwest Fifty-fourth Avenue, phase one. Northwest Fifty-fourth has completed the storm sewer installation that, on that phase, which is the last of our underground utilities. The contractor is placing fill material towards the west end of the project, bringing the grade up, preparing it for paving. They'll begin placing rock in that subbase in preparation of concrete in the next two weeks. A tree clearing will start on phase two after October first. And then concrete paving is scheduled to begin around the week of October fifth and be completed by mid-October. Grading and restoration will follow concrete placement. The contractor's currently planning to reopen that segment of the road at the end of October, first week in November. The contractor's currently planning to reopen that segment of the road at the end of October, first week in November. And all of those schedules are heavily dependent on what Mother Nature throws at us here in the next couple of months. So far. Any questions on the projects? Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Jim, anything else?
That's all I had for this evening. Are there any other department heads that had anything to share this tonight?
This is Dave Warding. I've got a quick update on city hall. Just to let the council know, we're still on track for a move date from the current building to the new building on October 8th and 9th. City Hall will be closed those two days and will reopen to the public on Monday, October 12th. It does not look like the council chambers will be 100% done upon opening, so they'll still be doing some work in there. Their focus right now is heavily on the main hallway corridor through the building. The admin side of the offices are, I would say, over 95% complete. All the, we're really down to touch-up items. All of the furniture's been installed, so it's really down to kind of some of the technology stuff that needs to go in there. It's really, really looking good, really looking ready for us to make the move. If you're looking for a bargain, we've posted over 60 items or lots of items from the existing city hall of items we're not going to be taking with us. Those are all listed on GovDeals, so you can go to govdeals.com/johnstonia and bid on your favorite 12 or 14 chairs or 29 filing cabinets, whatever you might have interest in. So everything's moving forward, kind of as we've last talked about on, on the city hall.
So Dave, what happens to those items if nobody bids on them?
Well, I chatted with Habitat for Humanity late last week and they have interest in a number of the items we've posted. So I've indicated that if they don't sell, that they'd have the opportunity to come in and, and see whatever is left and take whatever's left. We really have a small window of time in which we're hoping within two weeks from move-out date, we have all that stuff out of the building. Asbestos remediation done and then they're going to start demolition. And we're also coordinating with the fire department, they'd like to do some live training in the building while the sprinkler system is still alive and active. So we're trying to get that scheduled as well. So look at some training value out of the, out of the building before it comes down.
I just went on GovDeals and I see some things that I recognize.
And I would note, a lot of, a lot of items are also going to other city departments as well. So they all had first crack at anything that we were intending to not move. And most of the nicer furniture's heading to other departments, so.
Jim, anything else?
I think that's it for this evening.
Okay. Let's go to the city council members. Councilwoman Soroka?
No comments.
Councilwoman Martin?
I have no comments.
Councilman Coe?
I just want to thank Dave Woberting for already emailing out the sewer map. Appreciate it.
Councilman Evans?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Ready?
Yeah, I just like to thank Janet Woberting for helping me out, understand the survey. I had a couple of questions to, I had some questions to her and she replied back. So thank you, Janet. Appreciate that information you sent me.
You're welcome.
And I don't have anything more to add other than just again, thanks to everybody's patience as we work through the appeal on the dangerous dog situation. That was the first time I've been through something like that. And we had to kind of feel our way through the process, but I think it, I think it, it worked well. And just want to thank you all for your patience, so. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. Thanks, all.
Thank you. Good night.
You.
Bye-bye.